Okay, now we'll go take it apart, put it in order and let's just step on it. Again, my apologies for... here you have such a great momentum. What did I do? I tried to... so I apologize if I picked this up. There are four things to do that in terms of our work session schedule that we had wanted to accomplish. If we get them all done tonight, there's no need for a meeting Tuesday or a week from next Tuesday. If you do not, or you feel the need, if you want to have, we can have that home out there provided a block next Tuesday. So we're going to move this along with the idea that we're going to try to get it wrapped up tonight, but it's certainly okay if you don't. This is, you know, we're moving from our time from staff to your time for conversation. I don't want to rush that, but I also don't want to give, not feel like you have the opportunity to decide if you need and you want to give us a new budget and a strategic plan about three important issues for us to make sure that this is as planned as it is. So the four things are to complete the review of the current workload indicators that we started last week, move back to your strategic plan, and a piece of information that last week, see if you didn't have anything else that you want to add to that. Then address any items or questions that you might have related to the budget in general, which moves over quickly hopefully to the, you know, any hospital amendments or things that you really want to talk about from a proposal perspective. The calendar does ask with the better by your day that you have basically your initial conversations or indications to staff when you're looking to make budget amendments. So with that, let's just jump right in then to the community services. So in terms of the workload indicators we left off last week, including services and streets and in terms of plans, and again, this is intended to give you a very high-level overview. You have your handout, I believe it shows much more detail on these workload indicators that I think is about four weeks for a department, and just showing a couple of graphs and a couple of the highlights. And it's intended to just spur your thoughts on that particular division or department. If you have questions, that's your opportunity to kind of drill into that piece of our operations. On transit, see that from 1996 to 2018, you know, the miles of routes has gone up from about 50 to 70, and our employees have gone with that, but you can see that the employees have not grown up significantly with the routes expanded, you know, the challenges, the provision system we have, like the absence of resources and demand. So what do you look at? So this is, yeah, so this is the presentation. Okay, so if you did not, I'm sorry, if you did not bring your copy from last week, this is the actual colorblind presentation. You have copies.
He came prepared.
Yeah, what Emily has here is the, for these workload indicators, is a bigger package, it looks like, and it has more detail on each and every one of them. So you can follow along and then you can take some note of our presentation and for your reading pleasure, after you leave here, you have more detail available than the package. On transit, those current efficiencies, and again, efficiencies are not defined as somebody's not doing something well, or that, you know, we're not, you know, providing quality service. It's deficiencies in terms of the demand that has been increasing within the city and our ability to meet that demand with available resources. So currently, as it relates to transit, you know, our ability to expand service in different areas of the city, and our ability to attract new departments outside of drivers is a challenge that we have with the resources available. Any questions on transit?
I guess it's sort of a more general question about the, about these charts that often compare number of employees to a level of workload. And I don't know that any of them really show like exactly what their dollar allocation is as a comparison, because it seems like you could have three different metrics. It may be interesting to see that. I imagine the, you have other places that that's reflected, of course, but I'm not, I'm not sure if others would feel that that would be useful, but it just comes to mind is that sometimes the dollar amount for a particular department is, or service like transit may be going up at a different rate than, than employees or, you know, miles of service or things like that.
So we tried to reflect some of that in the presentation that Jay did with the budget, and we do have some pie graphs that show, probably not down to this level, but to maybe the department level, that shows the percentage of both revenue and expenses that are down below the level of services.
Well, and a lot of that are open websites, you know, we have like about six years of history on there now, so if you wanted to go back and take a look at actual budget numbers and expenditure numbers, that's certainly, certainly all there, or put something together. Now, I think really with these workload measures, what we're trying to get at is, you know, isn't whether budgets have gone up at the same rate or than other budgets, but really the disconnect between the resources and we're in the service business, so really it's people that deliver the services and the demand for those services. So really that's the relationship we're usually trying, trying to get at, because at the end of the day, yeah, I know that dollars can buy people, so to speak, or pay for people, so to speak, but at the end of the day, we're dependent upon those people in order to provide those services.
So in these graphs, all the, all the bars are like stacked vertically, and I wonder, so should we be paying attention to the differences in the inclines or the fact that...
Like between departments?
No, so like in this...
Yeah, like the, the employees here, and that line is, is either flat or going down slightly, but the miles of sewer main and the miles of water main are both increasing. So the, the, the number of, the miles of sewer and water main that we have to maintain is going up, but the number of employees has actually gone down slightly, so now each employee is having to maintain more miles of water main.
So we should pay attention less to the fact that the employee line is under those other two lines and more to the fact that they're slanting, climbing up.
That is a really, really good point. This is all about the fact that our resources to take care of this thing are in the same trajectory, the same ground. And so, and what, again, what this really shows is that we're in a current environment that's not sustainable, which is not as sustainable to continue to have, in this case, utilities, you know, the miles of water main and sewer main going up at a rate and energy maintenance, they have to be flushed, the valves have to be exercised, and yes, we have exercise valves, not quite like the one for God, we love exercise valves. All the firemen have to be exercised so that they work, right? You know, you don't, you don't move a valve, let it sit there, it will go up in place, and then when you need it, it's not available for the...
That's not what I was supposed to try and say.
So the, so if, either way, I, this is about those trend lines, and how those trend lines are diverging, and in long term, it's just not going to be sustainable for our community. At some point, the quality and our ability to bring whatever services we can, we'll have to, you know, have to, we just can't maintain the same level of quality of service. And when you're talking about something like the water main or sewer or something like that, I mean, that's, that's very important infrastructure, which is what we want, to not to have water, fire, hangers, and domes, and when we flush it better, it goes to the, you know, to relate to our community planning and our basement. So we did, we moved over to utilities. Any, so this is, again, this is a graph showing the miles of sewer line and water maintenance chain. And again, when you talk about those efficiencies or those, those differences between the demand and the available resources, you know, that gets to things like, you know, heat protection, higher fire rate payments, sewer, sewer movements, and storm sewer maintenance. Sorry, made through the conversation the other day about storms, where, you know, retention ponds. And the fact that, you know, those retention ponds, they're active, and the water goes in, they, they do what they're supposed to do, which is collect and keep things out of our riverways, while that, you know, that has to be taken out and cleaned out because that's totally piece of work, and, you know, they're, they're going material there, they know they have to be buried and maintained and taken through. Questions on utilities? Okay, recreation, same kind of recreation, because, you know, I thought maybe your question had to do with the level of the graphs between the different services, you know, super camp, well, this is the super line, I mean, I didn't put it wrong. And again, the number of employees, you know, is so low as far to, you know, recreation programs, but, you know, the problem here is the scale, you know, we're going from 500 programs offered to 80 program offers, so, you know, the number of employees is, is starting to narrow out of scale like that. But, you know, think of like a house, you know, the total number of hours that are rented, you know, that gets ice night, and, you know, when we've been at Hobbs, you know, the evening time is good, it is on ice, ice, that has to happen once an hour or 30 times a month. Somebody's got to run around, we have to get ice, we have a seeping machine, and then although we're teased, we could probably charge pretty penny for people to actually back that money. But pardon the dashboards, Rachel. Because there's a certain skill, and I think that can slide around, around that. But again, so Hobbs employees have actually gone down, right, from three to two, and you can see that the hours of ice time that we're maintaining has gone from under 4,000 to over 7,000 hours of ice. And so what does that mean from the efficiencies perspective? Are we able to fill some of the program needs, and, you know, we need to be able to help you improve and have the skill base that can get care of, get care of ice. Questions on recreation, Mr.?
I'm wondering specifically on the Hobbs, our relationship with the university, is that inquiries are, we maintain, are there, I mean, are we, for the, how my own relationship would be made more because they have more use, or how do you look at that?
So I couldn't look to get to respond to that, but they're a user of the facility, and, you know, so they pay for rates that they're there. I think the, and they personally have their practice time as well, and we do have agreements with them that relates to some, you know, locker rooms, and there's some storage issues and things that go with that. And so, you know, we view that as a very positive relationship, that if they did not have the ability to use Hobbs, then they have to build their own facility, which is a duplication of, of, of resources. And so, you know, Hobbs and Carson Park are excellent examples of community cooperation and sharing our resources. So, you know, when we do an expansion or do a change there, then we do look to the school that's been answered, or to the university, and, and some of the clubs that use it to help, you know, in that community effort, to make that work. So, and I think longer term, probably the question has more to do with where does the community go, you know, if we go to a different division, you know, a different division of hockey, and, you know, does that require a different facility, it's an appointment time, and so that may be a future conversation that we'd have to work about in working with the university. So, now, Jeff, if you have any more to add, with your relationship with the university?
Sure. The thing with the university too is that they're using of ice time, you know, with practices, kind of hot, of what you would use for the new, happy days and ice. So it actually goes on really well for us to then to use during the times that college students are more actively able to adjust their classes. It's, it's...
We've also had, we've tried to make adjustments in the university and apartment with this and that for women's hockey, so, you know, some of the fire stations were, you know, we were trying to commingle that, and we're able to offer some different facilities with, you know, a lot of, you know, spaces up and down, so.
I don't want to sound in any way that supportive of increases, but I'm just kind of wondering, to be most specific, that that sounds like we can become as efficient as we can, we have this high facility and you want to use it as much as you can, because otherwise it's just nothing.
Right, yeah. Or we're paying to keep it, keep it ice ahead.
Right, right. So we're using it more hours, but it's something that also costs, we're using the ice, so it has to be smooth, and so there's also with that efficiency, if that's the piece that we find, you know, is that.
Right. Yeah, we have, we have people that are into that ice application a lot sometimes, right? So, I mean, how old are they, they start the morning? Very early in the morning, so.
Sometimes it's like 3:00, 4:00, 5:00.
That's incredible.
Okay, community development and planning, just a graph here that represents how the city is growing, you know, from 2004 to 19, about 33 miles, square miles, and we're pushing almost 35 square miles, and, you know, and you go, oh, that's only two, because I think of a square mile, and maybe David can help me, but I don't need to figure in a square mile, or how many laps in a square mile, but, you know, that's not a small space, you know, when you think of a, of a square mile. You know, here's the acres that goes into a new subdivision, and so you're seeing that, you know, every year, you know, we're adding different acres for our subdivisions, and, you know, at that, although they don't have the graph with the employees, that can play with employees in the flat, of course, one of the areas this, this time, the graphics have some more, not so much on the inspection side, but on the, on the planning and the side of things with taking care of our neighborhoods. So what we're seeing is, you know, our reports, and we're not able to get quite as comprehensive of detail analysis, we've struggled to stay current with online options for applications and intake, our capacity to do research and implement newer additional strategies is becoming limited, we don't have a currently satisfied flood cleaning person, and we've got a lot of new programs, so the participatory budgeting, ready-to-rent, affordable housing, work plan work, the home organization funds, and then, it's not on here, but it should be, is the, is the additional labor, we're trying to, we want those laborers to provide the vibrant city, but they need help and support, and that comes from South, and it comes from community that owns it, so. Questions or comments, Scott and Community Health?
Is the dynamo yet on the answer?
Yeah, I didn't see that, but I heard.
But it's the primary, and I will talk about services, primary, I don't trust.
Implementation is starting, or is going out this year?
Yeah, primary software, yeah, so that's coming, that is coming online, and we're actually going to do a process now. Which is, you know, much of the way we have been able to maintain the level of services were not had to pull back as much as the technology. And that is where we're finding our, 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 our technology, and being able to put things online, be able to service people off-hours, you know, with, with online technology. Technology allows better communication, and the inspections area is an area that we haven't had that, kind of, of trade these technology efficiencies, and, but they're also having that in the next few months.
That's fine.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks.
Do you just, why, do that come in fast? Not like it has to be this way, but this, the efficiency that come on from that software, is that also can save personnel, so maybe there be an...
Yeah, so it saves hours in the sense that, you know, just a few examples, and if somebody can see that they're applying online for us to review, it saves not only our time, but it saves their time, it's a relationship online, and our employee can pull up and look at it, the employee doesn't have to either have received it by mail, or the applicant can have it coming in person, you know, sit down and go through it, the applicant can pay it online, doesn't have to watch from, you know, inspections, now the finance, you know, to do that. So, the, and other efficiencies will come, you know, for example, now, if the, if there's inspection, you might say that's okay, but the employee can track the office, has some paperwork built, you might, you know, paper mail or email and say if it's, you know, been approved, you know, hopefully get to a point where someone can feel, they can say your inspection's good, you can send it something in the field, and they know that they have approval, you know, that's more time of work. That lets the employee to move on to the next project as well, so, I don't know, Scott, there's just a few examples of some of the efficiencies that we're expecting, anything else on that?
Really, also it's been part of this, yeah, customer rating, online, several, launching departments, so, yeah, literally, we've had some, as a manager, and so, that's a very module, and we've got a lot of, and moved back to start working on the 40 modules, so, not just the primary side, also the 40 now, and sharing that, so, a lot of pieces.
It's also a help with performance measures, so that we're able to see that, how long it takes to do something, what the bottom ups are, if it will help in the prioritizing work, and, right now, it's very paper intensive, and it's, it'll be a big upgrade in that, and a big, you know.
So on the bio, so I think I'll say that this whole primary savings statistics, what would you be suggesting from saying?
All right, so, and, you know, but, I, I, the technology, I mean, we, you save time, but that time doesn't translate directly into dollars, that time translates into...
Capacity.
...capacity within the organization. So it allows, you know, that person who might have been sitting down with that developer, taking their application, rather than doing that, they're able to do other things that's not going to do now.
All right, anything else there? I, I'm trying to find that balance, we're moving just forward, but I don't want to rush it too, because I mean, I mean, no, you guys aren't shy, yes, I just hand that question. Economic development, you know, you can see here our various industrial areas, and for the most part, you know, the big blue line is the total acres in the park, the lighter blue line is the, the amount of the variable space, and you can see where we're starting to get tighter on industrial, you know. With the CIP this year, there was, there was an allocation, so we helped us start addressing that, but you can, you can see here that, you know, that's, that's a good thing, right? That we've been, been using, or been able to start to fill up, not start, but, you know, we're, we're using, and our investment in industrial is, is used, and if we need to get ahead of that even further, and, you know, sure we have options for people who want to use industrial and, and, and development. So again, a couple of deficiencies, you know, we're dealing with a shortage of industrial, and it's black, emphasis on black, it's one of our challenging, and accessible to rail, and then, you know, our marketing and promotional design overload, you know, is being done right now by unpaid interns. I, you know, would remind you that this budget is, is completion of a, what we call a five-day process to actually provide accessibility and the funding for economic staff, they have paid for out of a fixed amount of money that came from actually being one of the settlements back in 93, that money that dried up, you know, there, and, so, from our economic development staff, I don't know what I see in here, but they're, they're certainly more relieved to know that very, how the sort of funding source for their salaries and operations. So, yes.
That is sort of like a more positions to be focused on, on the education side, because it's a question, you know, it's other than giving interns, like, do we have a new staff person, do we have skill sets to work on some of our, the emotional, this is a lot more, but that's an eventual approach, trying to get that person, but, we're, we're still adaptive, trying to, can't...
All right. Here, now, here's inspections, right? So we talked about inspections earlier, kind of under the, so, you know, in Scott's world, the economic outlook is just some planning, and although there's a little crossover, you know, there, there are some very distinct and unique work efforts. You can see here that what we've got is the, you know, the trend line for the number of inspections, that, you know, they've gone around a little bit, but not great, I guess, from about 11, 10,500, all the way up to, you know, 11,500, if I'm right. But the trending is up for inspections, we'll decline. Here's our permit fees, going, again, you can look at the trend line and see, you know, what this represents is the size and complexity of the developments that we have, and it seems like we have at least one very complex inspection a year. If you go back a few years ago, it was the $100 million bed tower at the hospital, that's a big project, I mean, and in terms of number of inspections, that counts as one, right? So you have a house, you have, you know, a $100 million bed tower, that's, you know, that's one, you know, now, that's one heating, one electrical, one, I mean, so, but they, you know, this doesn't delineate based upon size, but the dollars do, because, you know, that reflects into it, and, so just, you know, the, you know, you have that, we have the Pabellson, which is a good project, and Bunchville Hospital, which is a good project, so, it seems like just about every year, over multiple years, we're getting this figure in a lot of complex inspection projects. Again, some of the deficiencies, you know, we're trying to get these inspections so they can be completed within 24 hours, we don't really have a dedicated family review, or, and sort of kind of work with that, and some of the efficiencies we talked about, the state code, you know, you want to have a two-week period, so what happens, particularly with these larger projects, the commercial projects, they go to the state for an initial review, and then they come to us, and so, at the state, they can, they can sit there for a week or five, six weeks, or a month, right? Sometimes even a couple of months, but, so, the developers are even waiting some period of time before it gets to us, so we're, you know, trying to have a two-week, we'd like to see that even, even less than that. The residential units, you can see the services there, you know, we don't have any staff now that there's, has expertise in rolling their settlement, and, of course, if we do developments in familiar areas, that comes, you know, for us, and then, you know, our limited ability to communicate with contractors in the field and in the primary, and then the technology's going to help us with some of those things, but, and these are some other areas that we're working on, and if you touch on some of those, just maybe we'll be able to, we'll be good at, yes, here.
So the staff training has come up a couple times, is, is the issue that there's not dollars to pay for that training, or is it that there's no time to acquire that training?
So the issue is that there are inspections for electrical, plumbing, and heating, and construction, and in a, in the most inefficient system, you have to have, you have a community of inspectors and have that expertise, and each one has to go out at a given time and inspect that piece of the, of the project. In the most efficient way, you have employees who are cross-training and have multiple certifications, and so you can have one person who can go out and say, all right, I can do the electric plumbing, and, you know, and check off, and that's more efficient for us, and it's more efficient for the builder or the contractor, as the developer at that time. So really, it comes down to the time, these certifications are not easy to get, they're very technical, and that's why you're, you know, trying to do what they do, and so, as we've had turnover, and we have new people coming in, it's very rare to have, when we hire folks for this work, they usually come from one special field, they're, they're master electrician, they're master plumber there, so they've been in a world, they have one really good expertise, but then we're asking them to maybe double with the whole , what people, right, that knowledge base that they, they're meaning with, it's rare for us to be able to hire someone that has multiple ones, so, we have a pay structure that encourages that, and, but, at the end of the day, there's just time for the things for those people to, you know, be able to get trained up and then pass the test, you know, which we pay for and take, to be able to have those certifications.
Yeah, we, we, you go back to, you have a service, like, you have a...
Yeah, do we have one right now?
We got, yeah, so we go through classes and training, including, you have time, you have... We got, yes, we go through classes and training, including a time passing to give that. And again, that's back to the last couple of years that we lost a lot of big academic knowledge. And all of this, so I think what they enter, the elements, you know, it's a control. So when we're managing it, it's not happening right now, we better just give, it's going to change out.
It's all part of the 50% and those fifty to sixty percent of the organization can come over from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twenty one. And there's still a big transition and this is one of those challenges that have to look like transition. Uh, engineering, here's the capital budget.
I have one question.
Yes.
The type of inspections, that being second century, so it's just getting out. That's not a, you might track any software or tracks of the performance, like there's just showing how many staff we are actually. It's just kind of capital information. So some of the things you see there are almost.
Though we hope to be able to be more data driven in our decision making and our. Engineering, just more and more, more projects and, you know, there's, every year there's a few complex projects. As well as the key residential speed projects. And again, with terminals, you know, we'll, we are working with, with several new employees. We have put pay plans in place and training that helps encourage people engineers. Civil engineers are, they're, they're one of the hardest areas to fill. I have had conversations with certain engineering firms that say they could hire every graduate from, you know, from, you know, I think it's kind of high school and still not involved in these. So we've worked really hard at growing our own and being able to bring people in as techs and they go to school and be able to, to show them a, you know, a, a, a long and successful career path in municipal. Civil engineering and so we've tried to create a career path for that. And they did an excellent job of mentoring and encouraging and, and helping people along that. But we've had the turnover and so there's a lot of people working on, on that. But, you know, some of the deficiencies, you know, the pavement to that index, you know, we, we're not being able to do that for all the parking lots and trails that we used to. The lack of citywide stormwatering and sand at their model for street for different predictions. You know, the, the attendance, the request for attendance at public involvement is increasing dramatic. We would even again have a fixed resource for that. Our ability to research and apply for necessarily all the grants that can be out there. If you're all aware of the alkiography, license credit recognition software and parking technology and, you know, there's, I mean, there's a lot of improvements you can do. But we, you know, we struggle to be able to get ahead of those. Our lack of a city sidewalk, you know, at one point we used to have an employee that walks every, you know, miles of sidewalks we have. Four hundred and four more, right? So, but we, we haven't, but, but here was the purpose. It's engines learn that and be able to say, there's a big crack there, there's a deficiency there and then be able to keep the sidewalks, you know, in, in better repair. Now we do that only on a complaint basis. So when we get a complaint, we go out and take a look at it. So our ability to, you know, to really be staying ahead of the, you know, the challenges of, of aging sidewalks is, is, is there. You know, monitoring developments, you know, is, is, is there going along and, and, and working with them particularly for surface water issues. You know, trying to have same day responses, complaints, and then again, the sidewalk repairs all the time. So, you know, that's just an example of, you know, again, in the area that's had essentially the same number of employees for a long, long time. And as the community grows and our ability to do more projects and do more projects, assuming that it will fall off the back end. So engineering, any questions to Dave on that? Uh, finance, it's kind of a little bit more difficult to find a difference of performance measures there in terms of, you know, a volume of work. But we did look at the number of parcels that are assessed. So, you know, we have an assessing division and again, we had a significant turnover in that staff. But essentially the same number of employees in the game, you can see it's not quite as steep as some of the other graphs, but, you know, the number of parcels that we assess are going up. And the, and the number of employees is actually, you know, slightly down from nineteen eighty six to twenty eighteen. The other things that, you know, we all, for example, we used to get GFOA. Or it was a government finance organization, you just get the platform, get awards for our budgeting process and the cap rate. This, and, and this cubicle, you know, book that you get. And the whole, the wall upstairs used to be aligned with the award that we get every year for the way we put together our reporting. We're still doing the reporting, but we're not applying for the award, not going to the effort to, to get the award every year. We're delaying some of our online payment options, although we're, you know, we are moving forward with them. There's many areas we can see do more. And then just working with process improvement. So many times finance is in an excellent position to help other departments with process improvements and find ways to have efficiencies and, you know, our ability to have finance help other departments do that is, is. The, I can say, yeah, yes.
Other thing on that deficiency goes that is potentially what can address. Do you want to affect our bond rating?
So I'll let, I'll let Jay take the deeper dive on that, but I don't know this deficiency in employees that is going to affect our bond rating. There's a, a more system, systematic issue that's happening with municipalities in the state of Wisconsin and go back to the land limits. And how municipalities are doing more, you know, borrowing than being able to put things into their operating budgets. So it, it, it won't be unexpected that you may sneak on grades in our operating. But it's going to have more to do with the structure of the way municipalities in Wisconsin are having to do business. And we can see that more across the state, but I think we'll find ourselves caught up in that as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anything staffing wise is really is a, is affecting our financial anymore. We, we're getting done what we need to get done and much of, much of that is driven by pronouncements and other things from the governmental accounting standards board. And, you know, our auditor is making sure that we're doing things in the right way as far as accounting goes and making sure that our internal controls are, are satisfactory. You know, those are things that we're, we make sure that, that we're doing. Really where we, we start getting affected more is on, on the long range planning side of things. The things that start falling through the cracks when, when you're having to devote more and more resources to the, kind of the everyday activities. But we're keeping up with, keeping up with most of it, but there's. Christine has been under some pressure this year from some other departments concerning some land projects, just because we're in the middle of budget. Prince de Valley was one of, one of them. Where it's like, we just, we just do not have time right now, you know? We have prioritized things and that was one of them that we said budget is more important than getting that land transfer taken care of.
All right, um, and the resources, just the number of recruitments and this isn't go back before two thousand, again, in two thousand and eleven, so I just see if this sort of goes up. But, you know, you start adding this up, so think about, so, you know, we're, we're hovering somewhere between fifty and sixty five recruitments a year. We only have five hundred employees in the organization. So, you know, you're talking about over ten percent of the organization every year based upon recruitments and the, and it's probably what's happening with, with the people that are coming out. So, and there's just a lot of work that goes into, you know, hiring the right employee and having the right fit. And, and then just getting them trained into so we can have seamless service, you know, to the public or council or anybody else that the requirements are.
Of a ten percent turnover, a percent higher ratio. How much of that is due to retirement? How much of that is due to other economic?
Yeah. Do you know, Hannah?
At this point, mostly retirements.
Yeah, most of it's retirement. I mean, so the vast majority of this retirement, but you're right, there is also a component of, you know, we're also seeing some of the, the employment kind of is happening with the remaining number of employees. Where perhaps they're not staying longer or, you know, we see a bit grew that's a little longer than we want, you know, and looking out for something else. So, you know, that, and I would say, you know, we, the, the non-retirement turnover is higher today than, you know, well, it's about fifteen, fifteen years ago. But it is not the driving force of, it's mostly the retirements, you know, that, that they were moving through this issue too. You know, one number, for example, so in the police department, we have ninety nine sworn officers. One hundred sworn officers and a department of about, there's another twenty five or thirty employees. We have the records and the council and things like that. And five years, you hired fifty employees, isn't it?
Thirty six sworn officers and other.
So just think about that and, and, and think about what it takes to continue the, and, and bring people into the culture and the environment and our values and, and the training that goes into, you know, keeping stability. And, and the product that we, we produce and the service level that we produce, you know, when you have that kind of channel there. And again, that's almost all retirements, isn't it?
Maybe a lot of people come in as well, so then once one's promoted to a position, then they have to recruit from there, you know, the position.
So you, you've heard me say for several years now that, you know, this turnover issue takes a lot of energy. It's hard to quantify, you know, the energy that's going into having that be successful. And I think most people would say that we are being very successful, we're, we're recruiting some wonderful people that are highly motivated and doing a great job. But, you know, that doesn't just happen, that takes a lot of energy in that recruitment process, the selection process, the training process, and, you know, monitoring that, so. So here's some of the deficiencies, you know, we're still trying to get to some electronic time sheets. You know, we're, we're, we're really trying to, to improve, you know, where we're at with the PBI initiatives and the impact that those can have and should have on the organization. Laserfish is a, is a, is a software and, you know, the IT person is going to help with it. It's a very, very powerful essentially records managing system. So we can take paper and manage it electronically. We implemented it before we even moved out of city hall, so even thousands of documents in there, but, you know, from an organizational perspective, it's work that used to be down there. We want to revamp, for example, our educational incentive tuition reimbursement program, which is probably hasn't kept up with, you know, some of the, of the times. You know, writing some consistency with some other policies and, you know, and just making sure that we're staying fresh with awards and recognitions and, you know, get all these new employees. And we want to make an environment that is encouraging and, and uplifting and rewarding for the work. Risk management, just a number of, of events that they manage each year is relatively stable there. You know, there's some things we're, we're behind on there in terms of some of our recent planning, some security, our plans and training. Staff have only one full time person, the half time person, you know, is full time here, but the county should get a half of that. The county needs to change their direction and so, you know, what used to be one and a half person is now down to one. But we're going to put in the safety part, our partners in, in the fire department and stuff in that place. And then we'll try out some of the expertise that they have to help our position outside of it. Uh, IT, this is of course just one of the areas that's just exploding in terms of the number of network devices, the number of cameras, the number of devices that are attached to the, to the network. All of which provide efficiencies for all the other departments in the, in the organization. Now, as you can see, the debt is just simply exploding. And that's, this is only a five year graph, right? Some of the other graphs have been twenty years. This is just five years, we've gone from two thousand, almost five thousand. This is just workload, right? These are the orders that come in from other departments saying, help, please, help. And, and, and again, you know, with the, a, a limited number of employees, that's not grown over, over several years.
Did I mention too, I had the, we implemented the new work order system a little of the February of this year. And that graph was done on October first. So technically that current, you know, two thousand laser number is on seven months.
So it's not even a full year of nineteen, obviously. Um, just in terms of the number of di, uh, devices, you know, this is the total devices that are out there. You know, you can see that there's been, you know, some change in the types of devices that we're, that we're working with. There's a whole list of deficiencies, it's, it's in here in the table there. But one of the areas we're working with is this community area network and, you know, we're now supporting over three thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred cameras. We've got a hundred servers that are doing storage and application. We get all the security issues that we're trying to do. We have the fiber optics and wifi to connect our facilities together, the infrastructure that's there. And so one of the things that's probably helped come down the other way is, you know, basically, you know, software and so on are on our servers and that's, you know, they're, they're remote. Basically, you know, they're called hosted services, so rather than, you know, the, the software on our servers or on hosted server. But with that comes a whole other level of technology and security issues, which make our networks secure from these, these homeless services. Legal, just the number of litigation files and hearings. You can see here the broad trend line on that is, is going up. You know, some of the deficiencies there, professional administration, assistant litigation, distant meetings and coverage and, and some fairly different work. You know, when we go up on appeal, both at the state court and or the federal court, you know, that takes a lot of work, a lot of effort. We've been very successful in our legal appeals, but, you know, it, it takes a lot of work to defend those. And we've done a good work with the other departments here where the decisions the council makes so that we can move this community forward. Anything else? I mean, I kind of rushed through a few of those, IT, legal, just one more.
Legal.
Yeah.
I was a part of the council that shifted that workload if we were.
Contracting up.
Under contract locations. Not that I can imagine if we would have made the wrong decision, but. That was a joke. Is that something that you should take another look at or?
So it did increase the workload, you know, in terms of, you know, what, you know, you see hours that have to be spent on that labor, you know, relations can, can, can take quite a bit of time sometimes. Now, on the, on the other side of that, that equation, when the time has shifted that over, we had more labor contracts in the district than we do now. So we've gone from five, well, you know, five formal and then had two other informal ones, so it's still seven that we're working with now, the three that we work with now. So the, the volume has reduced from when we made that decision, but it still takes up time. We do look at that decision, I think it's been, been working for us, but, you know, if we should find any time in the company, we should change that, you know, fix it really quick. We'd love to do that if we can, you know, at this point, it's been working. It does take time and energy and resources away from other work with legal department. See them on my hat again.
Things have been working well. It obviously does take time and resources, but I think offset more, more so really than the reduction in, in number. But by the improved relationship that we've had over the last several bargains, you know. I'm guarantee that, that that continues, but I think, you know, having it in-house and people that are also public employees and demonstrate mutual respect across the tables have been productive. Again, understanding that we each have our own unique interests and we talked about those at, at the outset, but that has sped up the process. I mean, we routinely have contracts that would be out well. I mean, we routinely have contracts that would be able well past, you know, the renewal days and, you know, that has been happening the last two go around. So, I think, I think that's been good, you know, honestly, while that is one driver. The biggest one that, that we're seeing is just the added economic activity and community activity. So whether it's the special events or, you know, most notably, the, the development agreements, but also partnering with, with different nonprofits or sport leagues. I mean, you expand, extended an agreement, which is fantastic, you know, for those interested in renovating Carson Park. But that, that takes agreements, it took a lot of time to draft it in the first instance, how do you extend it? You know, frankly, it takes less time to just fund it yourself, but, you know, that's not how the government is working because of the finances you're hearing about. So all those relationships and partnerships are great, but they take time to nurture and then to document through drafted agreements. And, I mean, right now, I've got five major development agreements. We talked about one, you approved one. As MOU, I know, I think that's there. And, you know, David always likes to throw some barbs around, but the very last time we did one of these, when you met last week, I mean, I was coming in and out talking to Christina, finishing up a development agreement. So there are just a lot more of those projects and frankly, the way we're getting them done is, I've got a great staff, we've got consistency in staff, you know, for the last five, six years. They're operating at a high level and, you know, thankfully, we don't have the turnover and, you know, we're, we're able to plow through and get it done, I think.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. All right, library, annual circulation, you can see it's, it's more than doubled, now from four thousand to over eight thousand in, from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand eighteen. And this one, the use of public computers, I think that's probably somewhere down around zero, right? Nineteen ninety-six to, you know, fifty-one thousand, now is that, is that individual users, right? Okay, so that's, that's an individual user having a session, right, that is there, so. And that does come with the, the library technology staff and, you know, who's maintaining those computers, working with those within their firms, keeping them clean of viruses and all of that, takes, you know, a lot of work. Several of the library deficiencies, you know, we've got one location and so, you know, certain broader sense of the community. You know, the library is open on Sundays, but only during the winter and not during the summer. A few years ago, actually, the library scaled back on that hours because of, you know, because of sort of the budget challenges that we have. You know, it opens at, at ten AM, but we have customers that are waiting here at nine o'clock to come in. There's been less funding from the Friends of the Library currently due to the capital campaign. You know, the collections budget was reduced in two thousand seventeen, about forty thousand. Now, we struggle to have plenty enough translators for monthly Spanish, to better serve the public. And, you know, the, you know, there's some pay structure issues with weekends and evenings, which make it challenging to, to have, you know, staff there. And the library admits a number of FTE employees, you know, to reduce, reduce down benefits. And that goes back to a federal law with, with thirty hours and, and so, you know, there's some staffing challenge with that. Any questions that anybody would have on the library or Pamela, anything you want to add?
I would say there are more and more formats as well and more demand for assistance. And we, okay, and one of our programs has tripled since nineteen ninety-six. So, that will be on their way to their end. And that takes a lot of time and it also creates a lot of new engagement opportunities. And it allows us to help people engage with the resources, the books and the other electronic resources as well. So, really good return on investment.
Any questions for Pamela?
So, a question about hours. So what, does it primarily come down to city funding in terms of the hours or is that partly a county thing? Or how exactly is that determined and where?
Well, it, it comes down to the, the city council provides the allocation of dollars to the library and the library board uses those dollars to decide what level of service that they're able to provide and what best suits, you know, the community. So, it's a, I would say, you know, when you talk about hours, you know, that's a, that is a, that is the decision of the library board based upon the resources that they have available. You know, if they're providing the resources, whether they use that for hours or collection or, you know, gap between different things is, you know, that, that's really deferred to the library and the expertise to decide what's the best level of service they can provide with the dollars they're paying for.
Has, has like a group like Friends of the Library decided ever to specifically fund something like hours? Or do they mostly do collections or programming?
So, yeah, go ahead.
They're the main supporter of our program. So, a year ago, we gave a total of forty thousand dollars, except this last year, that was halved. So, you know, actually, yeah. So, programming, we bring in special representatives and business vessels and that. So, that's their main support.
So, they're not supporting the base hours of operation. Now, the, one of the challenges that is if you're friends, you don't know from your year necessarily how much they're going to have available. So by tying that to programming, you know, if they had a really good year, maybe you can bring in some more programs or different programs, it's maybe more expensive if they, if they weren't quite as successful with their fundraising, you know, creatables up. It's better to adjust their assistance to, you know, to the programming that's, that they might want to have.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that.
Okay. Last one, health department and not leased by any of them.
I was going to say.
No, so it's like a relay, we're putting the strongest at the end, right? Okay.
The anchors.
All right. But here again, the graphs, communicable diseases are up, you know, some LIMIDIA screenings. And again, you can just see that, you know, we've, we've got significant increases from, you know, the, the last twenty years with, with the, with the communicable diseases. You can see here that the, you know, the city levy is, is a dark line, you know, going up, but the percentage of the budget that that tax levy is going down. And although the, you know, the levy contributions to the health department have grown over that period of time, the health department's having to rely, so there are some structural differences between the library and the health department. But the library, the health department is relying more and more on, on other sources of revenue, community grants and, and other funding that they can receive that the federal authorities should receive. And so you can see that as a percentage of the work that they do, you know, much more of that's having to come from other places than, than the tax levy. Current deficiencies, Nurse Family Partnership, you know, we've had to limit that to certain population groups. Some of the community prevention work that are used, in particular, the substance abuse. And I think we're going to see more in track on that with some funding that's been running out, you know, coming up here over the next year. Our capacity to do the proactive housing inspections, although we made a great leap forward, a great, you know, improvements in our housing inspection and being able to have, you know, quality, safe and, and healthy housing, that does take work. And our ability to do that is some preventative prevention programs, you know, with the mental health and alcohol misuse. Our, you know, the, our response to the emergence of communicable disease problems, the tobacco prevention efforts and control efforts have, have given pullback. Our collaboration with some of our key health partners is now, is possible, is good right to do. We've got some emerging issues related to public health and then just our capacity to do the health impact assistance. We're finding they're very helpful as we try to do, you know, total comprehensive reviews of, of, of our infrastructure and developments so that we're impacting the governance of health. And then there's lack of funding, you know, for non-retired, some of the proactive prevention. So, the health departments, like, you know, other departments that probably as much or more than, than most departments are really impacted by unfunded mandates, where the state will say, "We got a test for this, we got a report for this, we have to do that." But then they are not quite so quick to supply the funding to be able to do that work. So they find themselves on the front lines of that and then they scramble to get the resources through other means to be able to, to try to, to get that balance worked. So, Lisa, you have anything you want to add to that?
Just a very specific example of what Dale just described. We have a quarter of one point two million dollar communicable disease division budget, which is majority of the standard program services. And we get seven thousand dollars each state for that. So just one example, you are the staff between requirements we have, none of you want to get pertussis or influenza. And the work we're trying to do, but we have to do a lot of response versus being proactive because we simply don't get the services. And I think more and more, the community wants a partner on the base that could be very proactive in addressing lots of the issues that are listed there. Unless we run a grant, so if you do a lot of, and, you know, half of our budget has other funding sources, then we then, in turn, share the issue that we have a time needing priorities with the community. So a primary issue. Nobody with the title, grant writer. We have some people that are good at it, but it is certainly a challenge. And we've talked a lot, even before the health, we've talked about whether that should be a position. We have not hired a grant writer, but we have built some capacity in skills, but certainly a challenge. We do a very good job of that, it's very impressive.
Any other questions for this guy? Okay then, what we have left then is, you know, this was, I'm sorry, this was left out from last week, so we can, let me go back to this ten or this time. So, so that completes the review of the department workloads. We have a conversation filing up on the strategic plan, any other budget questions you have and then some time to talk about policy on this. All right, so let's spend a little bit of time, I wanted to loop back and just get your feedback. Last week, we talked about the strategic plan and we handed out to you two documents. One would be the strategic plan that we, that we would bring back to council for approval. We had a lot of discussion about, you know, the priorities, that there are the seven, you know, you know, strategic goals and objectives. And then we, we've worked from a staff perspective to develop some objectives underneath that, which narrow down each, within each of the seven. You know, calling those the what, if the strategic goal is the Y, the objective is the what. And then, and then you have another document, the trigger document, then has a whole bunch of hows on there. Which really stands, reflection and, and commitment to, you know, some of the things that we're going to do to help the organization move forward to accomplish the, the objectives and the strategic goals. So, we've had a chance to adjust that, we talked last week, in particular, this, this, you know, dividing out of roles between the why, the what and the how. And I guess I'm just looking for some feedback. Yeah, a little bit of feedback last week and working time to think about it and, I know it looks like it's well-used.
Oh, I know.
So, thoughts, reactions, yeah, before we bring it back to your, your vote and official consideration, yes, yes?
I really, I really like the way that the cycle is, red just kind of highlights off the layers so that it's, um. The, the wonder that I would have is where it's new information, how is it there to the, the process is always the issue that there's something that becomes unanticipated. So where, where would you imagine something new that seemed to be, if not urgent, at least important? How would you see that?
So that's going, that's what's going to come out of this quarterly report. And so we reword out quarterly the how, that, you know, we will be identifying with that, you know, what, what changed from the last quarter? I mean, what, what came roaring in and from our perspective and trying to manage this, what, what got bumped to the front line, what got bumped further down? Certainly, I need as the manager and also the staff to explain why, you know, we made that decision and, and, you know, what, what moved on it. So, so that's, that's the idea, is that the scorecard that we'll give next, when we develop, will be the, you know, basically keeping you up to speed with all the how work and, and how it's moving, because it is always moving. It's never a static issue. That's the challenge we had, is that, you know, all the things we do is not static. Now, for context, at some point, I do think we need to come back and visit, you know, this what column and try to prioritize it a little bit. Not necessarily the how, but this what, because there's a ton of work there, there's a lot of work there. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, we, we can't give equal effort to all of that. So, you know, these are here for consideration for approval now. As I see us moving forward and ensuring in our process of being able to communicate and prioritize, we're going to need to spend some time talking about what our priorities are. So that that helps direct us then, you know, if you're able to prioritize your objectives at, at the policy level, that helps us then prioritize the strategies or the hows and the reasons. That's not here right now, but really, the first step is at least being able to identify all the work that's happening and the changes that are happening so that we can have a, you know, a good conversation around, well, and how do we prioritize that. In addition to the reporting components, you know, of really the how, the strategic hows and, and, you know, what we're doing, we're also looking to add to that conversation, the, the departmental issues that are happening, so they're not going to be strategic, but just the things that happen from the department perspective, right? A software program crashed, we're implementing a new one, or, you know, I mean, there's just something that came in from an operational standpoint that's impacting our ability to get to the strategic things. And we also want to be able to quantify, identify and reveal the, the emerging issues, right? So when we see things that are coming up and we can start having conversations about, well, it's not here yet, but where is that going to fit in this when it does come up? So, really, this is just setting the, I would call the groundwork for those future conversations that, you know. But once we're able to establish a plan and a rhythm to that, you know, it'll make it easier to have those other conversations about prioritization and, you know, and changes.
Would you see those as being back and forth conversations? Because I could imagine council members might have constituents that all of a sudden you're hearing something or, yeah, you're, you're hearing something more frequently than you might before that, you know, what we said or something.
So, we, we had a good, I mean, sort of one of those, I mean, we were talking about inspections today, right? So that's been kind of an emerging, you know, issue that needs some attention and we're giving that attention. We're giving that, the attention that deserves and needs to, to be able to keep our development moving forward in the, in the community. So I don't know if it's necessarily a, so this proposes that there be an annual conversation about that where we intentionally talk about that in the normal perspective, certainly to the extent that the other three quarters are a written report and individual council members have questions, and maybe we can certainly, you know, and talk about those, you know, on, on a individual basis. Or we can address them, you know, in, in other, you know, written communication. If, if the council member said anything further explaining why this changed or that changed, you know, we can see that in the follow-up communication. Other thoughts, feedback, comments? Go ahead.
Uh, just to kind of clarify that, what you think, and Jill's asking, right? So a council does want to do something, like, what do you mean, plan something?
Sunday bus service.
Sunday bus service. Like, how would that work in this, then? I mean, he'll need something better.
Yeah, so to the extent that the council now, the, the council as a whole provides direction, so I, I would see that's gonna come in, in, in two areas. So to the extent that transportation and, you know, more transportation is accessible to people experiencing low income is one of our objectives, when we have that conversation about prioritization, that's gonna be the indicator, just in terms of how much staff is, you know, where, where that staff plan is gonna go. But also to the extent that, you know, we have, you know, initiatives or things that are, that are brought forward, um, and, and they're, you know, the council as a whole provides direction, then, you know, that goes on, on the list. The other piece to that, though, is, um, what best to say is, that, you know, part of, of, of my role and our role as staff is to try to align our work with where, you know, we see the council wants to go. And so, um, you know, to the extent that, you know, there are conversations that I have with, with, you know, one or, or several of you at different times, I mean, we get ideas, staff gets ideas at conferences, I mean, you're gonna see that, you know, come forward, um, and, you know, I guess, you know, ultimately, if, if there's something that, you know, with the council that really strongly is not getting the attention, right, that, that you want it to, you know, then we have to have that conversation. At the same time, you know, remembering your policymakers and our administrators and, and the doers, um, and, you know, and, and trying to respect that line of, of not telling us how to do, you know, everything to get to the, um, the, you know, the objective to, to communicate. So, my hope would be that as this conversation develops, that, you know, the, the, the objective column, uh, the, you know, the, the what column gets some better attention with time and with priorities, um, and we have conversations around that, and for sure, you know, I know what we're doing with it. You know, I mean, I'm really, I mean, I'll give you two just really good examples of things that I think are working pretty well. Uh, one of them is the, and I used this one before, which is the sustainability efforts, right, where, um, you know, there was, there was some career goals that were set by council, and staff had done, you know, a ton of different things, right, that are moving forward, and I haven't talked a whole lot of discipline or misunderstanding, or is enough effort not working, and pretty, pretty well aligned. The other one's the affordable housing piece, right? There isn't, there isn't really anything that council has said, well, do this at a very high, or, or hollow detail level, but by working through the regional task force on that, with the whole list of things that came out, it seems to be some consensus, yeah, those are things that need to, to be working on. So, uh, the other thing I would say is, in addition to the what column and prioritizing it, uh, the other piece we want to work on that, with council on, is, you know, what are the key indicators of success? So, being able to, for each one of these, in the, in the center column here, be able to identify, well, how do we want to do success? So, once, as a council from a policy level, you've been able to say, well, this is what success looks like, right? Then, that's gonna inform us by, you know, what the how should be, right, to be able to measure that success. And that is a piece that's not here yet. So again, yeah, this has been an evolving process, because what does an interactive response or, um, a strategic plan look like that truly moves the organization forward in a, in a strategic way, rather than just being pulled in a lot of different directions, for like the player of the day, or the, you know, the, you know, the conference topic of the day. I only mention that because a bunch of your, your conference, and you're gonna come back with a ton of really good ideas, um, but...
We love it, Alan.
Yes.
Yeah, I like it.
Exactly. So, I guess that would be my, my answer to that, is with time, we'll be prioritizing this, this column. With time, we'll be adding key performance indicators, which is then going to inform even better what, you know, staff can do to be successful to get council where you want to go with strategic goals. Right now, we're simply just taking all this work at a snapshot in time and be able to put out there. We're committed to reporting on that, we're committed to coming back at some point, talking about prioritization, we're committed to coming back and talking about key performance indicators, or key to put on that.
So the lead is all of us, not just that?
Yes.
That will be involved in that conversation?
Yes. In terms of prioritizing, yes, and putting key indicators, the lead is more time up each, that last spring, which is senior chef and the council.
Well, and I, I think just maybe to add to that a little bit, that some of the other processes that have existed, like the pre-legislative discussions and other, those, those still exist, so, those are still, you know, mechanisms that happen and are in place with council members doing forward initiatives. I think, you know, this is really a way to try to start focusing on, on that strategic plan, that strategic goal, so that we're all moving in the same, same direction, and as far as, um, resources and efforts, staff's part, so we're moving in the direction that council wants us to go. And keep in mind that, you know, the, if, if, you know, new things, uh, new things come up and we're, you know, getting pulled off to do other things, it may mean that we're not spending as much effort going, you know, steering that ship in the direction that, that you wanted us to go, we're now going off on, on other, on other payouts, but, uh, you know, it's really try to get that, get that focus.
And, and the long-term commitment to that purpose.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, for any of you that have CUBI training, I mean, you know, greatness is, is, I don't wanna forget exactly what, but basically, there's a lot of good ideas that can take away from being able to do great ideas. Unless you, unless you can really focus on the great ideas, the good ideas will just back to you, you come getting to the great ideas, and, you know, that, that takes an intentionality, when there are just so many controls in different directions. Other comments, feedback? Yes?
I think that council, you know, you are actually, and based on your, your, your decision, you should, for, for seeing, and you'll be, uh, stressed because of that. I think, I think, uh, council, you know, what to do is, that will be more effective for the community, and you're gonna, don't give it so much direction or, uh, 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 do it, uh, the right, that will get, we, uh, stuff, uh, you know.
Mm-hmm. That's what I think there. Yes?
I think this is a, this is gonna be a, a great communication tool, so I think this is, this, I appreciate the work that went into this, and the, sort of 3D logic, putting all of this together, it's really great. Catherine was not able to be here, and she wanted, she asked me to make, to share some thoughts she had, I don't know if, she mentioned somebody might be printing them out or bringing them, but I'm not sure if that happened or...
We, we did get, yeah, so I did get this, it came in at four thousand nine.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's a...
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I, I know it was a very, like, she, um, called me from a layover, so, um, and I'm happy just to read what she, what she, um, shared, and, um, and she, basically, like, I think the, the, the paragraphs are sort of geared toward thinking of clarifying this existing document, so that we have, um, a more developed sketch of the, I guess, the how, the middle column. Um, so she wants to add a how to develop, um, add an objective under the first, the economic security, to develop, understand, and refine the city's commitment to approaches to addressing and reducing poverty, and add a how, develop an inventory of the city's current poverty reductions initiatives, develop a strategy that applies an evidence-based approach to improve short-term and long-term outcomes for people experiencing low to moderate income, convene stakeholder meetings with people expediting low to moderate, experiencing low to moderate income, and organizations for addressing poverty, seek your input on what the city program should continue, on what city program should continue sunset or be initiated, offer a stipend for participation to people experiencing low to moderate income, and the funds for stipend to come from council budget that would otherwise be used for council's professional development. And, uh, use feedback to create a poverty reduction action plan, bring proposed action plan to council for approval, implement plan and keep public, staff, and council update through a dashboard that measures progress. Um, and then she had some other comments under the section, uh, facilitate community, um, remove dog park as a specific objective, um, and add the related how to six C, and not too much, but, um, create engaging communities objective, create venues and spaces to connect people, in addition to consider additional dog parks. For the strategic goal regarding optimizing potential of the organization, be an active community leader to address EDI efforts as building a strong workforce, and help with local workforce retention for diverse local workforce and residents, and add a how, um, create a language access plan for when residents need assistance if they have limited English proficiency or other language barriers, create and present a workforce plan that includes the individual department plans, um, present staffing options to council to consider adding staff to have dedication to city equity, diversity, and inclusion efforts for the 2021 budget, be a resource to local private and private sector who are addressing, um, uh, diverse equity, diversity, inclusion in their organization. And number six, under create engaging opportunities, under objective C, um, create venues and spaces to connect people, add strategies, uh, how, uh, work with the university to determine if city should partner with the SONN and TAG event center. If yes, staff prepares options to council for potential partnerships, make capital operating or tip assistance, and if yes, connect the partnership to other strategic goals and objectives and the thing. So, I threw a lot out there from, from Catherine, who's flying through the air, um, but I just wanted to make sure her, her comments were represented.
So, I would summarize that, and, yes, this, this, so I just hardly even could, um, really, well, there's a couple of things, there's two, there's that, and, well, currently, there's two things that would really be, so if you were to look at, um, just take this out, and, and if you were to look at, uh, you look over here, where you have the color numbers, the difference, um, again, the, the number is, is here, the why, the letters are the what, and the how, and I guess, um, respectfully, I would, um, I guess, ask the council, again, how, which would be, you have some good ideas, but there's not direction to say that, so if you are gonna add some of these objectives that she's proposing, that, you know, it's not a directive to say this is how you're gonna have to do it, that's, I mean, those are ideas that staff can look at and consider, and they, you know, add them the, the next time that we, we're for on, but, um, you know, if there's, there's a direction from the policy level on that level of detail, how something was done. So if I'm reading her memo, her, you know, right, what she's asking for is an objective, number one, which is economic, and a little curious, she says economic, she says, uses the word economic security for one, but you really don't have the word security there, it's, it's economic prosperity for all. Uh, but she's looking to add an objective, which is to develop, understand, and refine this release commitment to approaches to addressing and reducing poverty. Um, so that is really the core of that request.
Definitely.
There's a whole bunch of hows that's there, but that's the objective. That is a, it's a big objective. It's not what went up on the wall, you know, last spring, um, and, uh, and, and it's, it's a big enough objective that, you know, if, if we do add that, um, we're gonna have to have some conversations about what that comes out, and there's been a lot of conversation about affordable housing, and we've been aligning ourselves with a lot of work around affordable housing. If we're gonna have an objective on addressing and reducing poverty, that's, that's gonna be a whole different, you know, perhaps somewhat parallel, but different, uh, uh, set of work lines that are concurrent in that, you know, um, you know, sheet out the work line. So, so I would say, so that's one of the ones she's asking for, develop and understand and refine. The other one, um, so you can kind of take the motion out there, so if you turn to number three, which is the, uh, optimizing, um, the organization, she's asking to add, be an active community leader to address EDI issues, efforts at building a strong workforce, also local workforce retention, and then a how, but, uh, essentially, under the optimizing the potential for the organization, uh, we would be adding, um, one for, uh, the EDI initiatives. So those are the two, is, is it a third one?
Uh, thinking about connections with the SONN and TAG event center.
Those, I think, are all hows, under the create venues and spaces and capital, so there's some suggestion for hows, but it doesn't change that, that, should be the middle column, if you're looking at the big document, or the BDCs, you know, for that.
Yeah, and I, I definitely, um, appreciate the, the comment that, that you made, that, you know, um, there is a capacity issue in terms of adding that dimension of, of poverty reduction. At the same time, I think one of the things that's come out of, um, our, our work toward affordable housing has been, um, a growing appreciation for the other factors that challenge our efforts in affordable housing, and make it harder for us to reach those goals. So I, I think I would encourage, um, us to think about, um, ways to, as we think about measurements of success and what that looks like, and, and building this kind of roadmap for our, where we're going, to think about, um, that prosperity for all objective in, um, a holistic way, um, so that we can approach the challenges that we're facing, um, from the angles that we can, so that we can, can get the results that we want. I think that the affordable housing, um, efforts that we have, a big part of, part of that is, um, just for economic development and for the workforce, but a big part of that is for equity, too, and we wanna make sure that we can have the right metrics and achieve the goals we want.
Other thoughts, you there?
Um, I would, I wanna kind of bridge, uh, I think this is a great example of, of how this helps us to respond to the, um, one of the things, the two that I'm working on a lot is the affordable housing and sustainable energy, also had pretty wide support and awareness within the community. It wasn't, it wasn't a singular revelation that we were trying to convince each other of. Um, and this idea of our range, um, differential from the statewide average did more to do with why people went to the probably forty thousand, that, that has been, been making more aware because of our work on affordable housing. But I think my response, just as an individual, with the conversation that would come along, other initiatives or other ideas, would be, how can I engage the community in vetting that? How ready are we to work on that? What potential is there for success before it goes on as an objective? So that would, that would be how I would respond, is, okay, go up there and get your people, you know. So I think that the council is a way where you can lead and activate, but I think we have to lead and activate from some kind of substantial support, you know, so, those are the ideas I think, to, you know.
I think the other thing to, to make sure you keep in mind is that the, the whats or those objectives are, you know, the, the timeframe that, that Dale has laid out, is those are revisited, you know, every three years, so, you know, you, you kind of think of them in that, in that way, is that what you have here now is kind of a set of objectives for the next three, three years, give staff and our community, you know, go forth and hopefully accomplish, though, that set, or at least make good progress towards them, before we start adding too many more things in, push them in, kind of get back to prioritization, but then starts to hooty staff's resources, and we're not be able to accomplish anything with respect to Dale.
But it does look good, that's the conversation.
Right.
For becoming more, um, assumptive and comfortable with, yeah, we have capacity for that, and if you're, if you're gonna go there, yeah, yeah, maybe, you know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I totally see the, um, you know, the temptation to... Yeah, I mean, yeah, I totally see the temptation to like, start writing additional sections. I do think there's a lot of great stuff in here, obviously, that, you know, the subjectives, the what section is the newer part that I'm trying to digest a little bit here. And, you know, the housing issue is obviously incredibly important, and the, and I've always, you know, focused a lot on transportation as a lever for sustainability and affordability as well, but there, and there's a lot of great stuff in the how about transportation, maybe Sunday bus service is in there now, maybe it could be added soon, I don't know. But the, a few things I do want to mention is that, you know, we could potentially create a stronger objective on transportation. Maybe it's building out of two B that says provide transportation infrastructure that supports all modes of transportation.
I could. We don't want to lose, I mean, at the end of this, I'm trying to get some direction on what.
Yeah.
So will this circle back to Catherine's line?
Oh.
The refining or developing understanding and finding communities to address and reduce some poverty.
Yeah, essentially it does, yeah, but, I mean, in a roundabout way, so we could, if you want to finish that first.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get some direction on what you want to do with that.
Okay.
That's a, that's a big initiative that, you know, really wasn't on board last, last spring.
I think you should try to articulate it more in here somehow.
Probably the one that gets most closely is wanting to promote and attract employers. It's just looking at the other side of that. It's looking at the key, the key side of the portfolio. But, yeah, I, I guess, I guess we'll do a little bit better to build a house and head out and then.
And again, we will adjust the hows to what you guys decided on.
But I'm pointing on the problem.
No, right.
I feel it, exactly, we have a complicated conversation.
Yeah, because that's a complicated conversation, yeah. Yeah. No, it's not, but there is, there is a very significant liability asset, it's a structural problem. So I think that, you know, the involvement of staff and the donations would, would be a lot of.
Most of the work, we closely related that and sort of that, your comment, has been more around affordable housing and transportation issues, kind of addressing. And, and I would also say safe and affordable housing is kind of back around there. So, okay, so I, I, um, yes, I'm hearing you park that for a little bit. If I may say so, I haven't had the time to digest all this, so that, that's what I have. Just from listening and listening, it's a noble idea, but, you know, one of the most researches, good stuff down, you know, we've got pretty good faith, well, working, much as ever, we're, we're making progress in economic development with more jobs, more fair things, uh, also, you know.
It doesn't prevent us from building the foundation that Joe's getting to. I think we can continue to do that as a, as a body, as, you know, on the staff side and the community side, and start, start taking the steps to get to where we can actually be effective and productive, you know, with that, with that what in mind. And not to say that it can't start next week, at least on the other side, I mean, on the background side of it, so I think that's, to me, an approach at this stage where we are now with everything else, I just feel like that makes good sense.
Appreciate it, yeah. On EDI, on the optimizing the organization, I think, so we already have one that's, you know, promoting diversity, inclusion in our workforce. EDI is actually over in the hows. So I think without significant change or redirection of how it is pushing more some of what she presented here, things of what, it calls out a little more the EDI, her proposal is active community to address the EDI efforts to build a strong workforce. And so that, that's already very much aligned, I think it's rewarding, I think, some of what's already there. So that one, I think, we can, we can work into without a big adjustment to those kind of, those are the ones. So I'll, I'll work on, unless anybody has any objections, I can work on, and hold on to that one, man. So, Jeremy, you're up.
Yeah, I was just, when I was, yeah, I guess going back to that two B, so it's, yeah, under the strategic goal of provide safe, functional, and accessible infrastructure, there's the provide transportation infrastructure that supports all modes of transportation. It's an interesting, you know, I think that's obviously a great step, and we've been doing that, and there's a lot of like hows that are digging into that. But what I, but what you mentioned earlier about, about two C, which is the hundred percent renewable energy goal, is it's more specific and it gives more direction.
Right.
And I'm just kind of wondering.
And also, again, I'm hopeful that we have the kind of specificity at all.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was getting at, is maybe it's not something we can do with this draft, but maybe it's something that requires long-term alignment of the council and the community and, but the, you know, when I think about all modes of transportation, sometimes I, and you, and comparing that to energy, it's, that's like the, all of the above energy strategy, which this isn't exactly like sustainable or like, you know, even possible, for example, so. So like somehow having these objectives kind of take a, take a position, I guess, a little bit more, where, you know, maybe it's about reducing automobile dependency, because we know that's going to increase affordability, or public health, or environmental impact, or safety, or things like that. And, you know, just to touch on the affordability piece again, which I think we should as much as we can, in the Alice report, the cost of transportation is, is equal for survival budget as it is for housing, and we know that that.
It's more.
Yeah, and then when you get to the housing stability budget, it is actually more, so housing stability, so a stable four-person family, a monthly budget of $1,200 for transportation on the average for Eau Claire County. For housing, it's about $950. So actually, as you start to reach a more stable position, the share of your total income going to transportation goes up as opposed to housing, so. And we, and I think we all know that housing is a very difficult needle to move, especially given the city house limited role, but I think the transportation sector is one, like, if we can have a family of four be able to live with one car instead of two or three, that can bring it, bring the transportation part of the budget at half, or even more than that, so. So I just wanted to put that out there in terms of specificity on these objectives is, and some of it requires more council direction and discussion, just as, you know, getting to, to the point of having two C here, as specific as it is, took us ten years, really, so.
That's the goal ultimately, and this is the first step in, you know, this refining, this, this process, so it doesn't move us forward. And so, yes, more specificity on EDI, so key performance indicators.
How do we measure success? How do we know what we've achieved in there?
That, that will help drive, help, you know, a lot of hows. That and then prioritizing which ones are, you know, are, are all future conversations to be had as we, you know, do what we're doing. Other thoughts on this? Just like, want to talk about amendments and budget? Does anybody else have anything?
I have a thought.
Yeah.
So the formal housing, how was, that's part of the plan, I know it came out, we'll come back to task force. Are we going to see that separately, or is this where we're seeing it?
We're seeing it in here.
Okay.
Now, at some point, I'm sure that Scott will be putting back out to the task force itself, how we're doing on those items, so, you know, the task force related items will get pulled out of here. So most of this is task force, I think, the task force, I think there are other things you can add, you know, addition to this, but I think that all the task force recommendations are big.
You know, it's a lot.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, all great ideas, but it goes back to prioritizing, and so we'll hopefully be able to share their values and how things should be prioritized with the affordable housing, or that we're doing now.
No, it's not what we're doing now. What we're doing now is just setting this framework of the whys, the whats, and then, and it's in the framework in which I'll be reporting out the hows, but that's what we're talking about. Because I would bring this back to the business agenda, please, to approve, you know, the whys and the whats, and it should be the objectives. And then we get busy with, once we know that's where you want to go, then we get busy with setting the format and, and the reporting mechanisms, and then we'll circle back around prioritization and the key, so we can get more information to do this.
No, I'm just sitting like this.
I have more questions for you in a moment, but, so what we did, we were, what was that this spring? And what's on the board?
Yeah.
So that's all in here?
Yep.
Like that was constantly came up with as well?
Well, when we, we recall, you know, I had, were the things we should do, the things that, you know, there are some things that we said we weren't going to do.
Right.
So those things are not up.
Right, right.
So if you go back to, yeah, the E ordinance is not up.
Didn't make it.
Didn't make it. All right. Anything else? All right. Then, then I'll, we'll clean this up, I'll work that EDI through the, the organization over there. Any questions or anything more information you need or not on the budget to be comfortable with the process? There are, again, Friday is the deadline for bringing forward your ideas to staff and J or I, which you might have, and you'll work with those and, and that's the date.
Yeah, and we'll turn, you know, turn that back around with options to fund those requests by Wednesday, Wednesday of the following week. And then, once we have some agreement on how we're going to report, then turn that back around with the actual amendments themselves, and so is the cover, cover MO on staff report that's going to be agenda package.
So last year is the first year that the council had asked us to, to talk about amendments that you might be thinking about. So this would be your opportunity, you know, you have to, but I think the idea is from a transparency perspective, if you're thinking about something, to maybe share that with your fellow council members. And then to the extent you choose to want to follow up with that, or not follow up with that, you, you jump across that, so. Yes, Jeremy?
Just wanted to kind of clarify the, I guess there's two parts of it, I think Jay mentioned them, but I maybe didn't hear them this. So by this Friday, you'd like?
Conceptual ideas that you'd like to do within.
Yeah.
That then starts the process for Jay and I working with you to flesh out and develop, you know, what that would specifically look like, and then, you know, next week, we would hope to have that finalized, so you have in front of you. I'm proposing to increase here and increase here, and you would know the impacts of that and why.
Because I guess my question is, is what if you don't really know what you want to do is going to cost?
So what would happen with that?
So like, and then, but then, like, at what point, how soon after you know how much it's going to cost, do you need to know what you would prioritize to, or de-prioritize within the rest of the budget? Because I guess, like, say for example, on Friday, I, I say, I want this, I want an amendment that would do this, but I don't know much it's going to cost. I would maybe find out by Tuesday or Wednesday how much it would cost, and then I would have until?
Friday.
Friday to, to say what I would de-prioritize.
And we would work with you with some ideas on where you might want to do for everything. We would ask you to at least try to identify the program, what the service level, that would like us, you know, to say, you know, I, I don't know exactly what this will look like, but I'd, I'd be okay if we mowed the grass less and there's a dollar, or you know, a dollar on it, but then we can tell you what that impacted you.
Okay.
And then you could say, well, that works for you with that.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Do you have an idea? Because that was time, is it?
Yeah, it is, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that we, we understood what that timeline was, but, but yeah, I, you know, one thing I really appreciate in this budget, as I do a lot of things actually, in the, was the area of, you know, increasing early voting hours for the evening at a down, at the downtown site. There's certainly been also interest in the community and in increasing the number of early voting sites, particularly potentially one at UW Eau Claire, because there are some challenges for students to vote, and, you know, on election day there, in particular, there's usually always lines, because there's a lot of people that need to register. And I know McIntyre Library does a lot to help students register and student senate and other entities, but it still seems like it's a problem. That is, that happens every election, so. And then there may be other parts of the community, like the north side or the south side, or places that are maybe, maybe are, don't, maybe the population doesn't tend to go downtown as often, but, or can't get downtown as easily, so. So one of the thoughts is to, is to look at what it would cost for the city to, to have additional early voting sites, like the city of Madison, for example, that has, I believe, eighteen early voting sites throughout the city. And they, you know, they have a whole system, branch libraries that they use, and they have several in there at the higher education institutions in town, so. Just something that I have been in conversation with, with students and, and staff at the university in particular, but there may be interest in other parts of the community and, and the, one thing that we've talked about, you know, that I've had some conversations with staff so far, and council member Eaton has been really involved too, is just, you know, what this would really mean in terms of the cost, and we don't really have that information yet, but hopefully we can have it by Tuesday or Wednesday next week, where, you know, the possibility is it could even require a whole nother position in the elections office, which is a pretty big lift, of course, so. We don't, I don't know for sure if that's going to be the conclusion in terms of the cost, but just something that to put out there.
Let's say that somebody wants labor because they need to get home and then go down to go, whereas if there was a location close to their home, that would be a, the downtown side would be great.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So one of our sites might be the same amount of voiding, but would be more personal than personal, or volunteers, and that, that's something.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, obviously, what, what is proposed in the budget is really amazing to have those extra hours in the evening, because, but yeah, just what people are thinking about, if they've heard, you know, from people about additional sites in their, in their neighborhood or things like that, but not sure if it's been.
My thoughts go on that, but it wasn't so much about voting hours, it's about, you know, people cut off any information, so. To know who we go for, who's one of them, also, where are you going to be most person? Don't call your council member, but they won't call the one.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if this is a time to talk, to get reactions from other council members or what, but.
This is that space for.
Yeah, okay. So if anyone has anything to say about that, feel free. So if anyone has anything to say about that, feel free.
Jeremy, I was just chatting with Carrie a little bit. You know, one of, if, if registering at the polls is the issue because that creates longer lines, um, that might be, that might be something that really that, this always gets back to, as Dale always says, what's the problem that we're trying to solve? Um, you know, and if, and if, if that's part of the problem, there might be a way to help address that, um, without actually setting up another, another polling place by addressing the registration issue ahead of time, um, as opposed to actually setting up another early voting site. But again, that's, again, we can have, that, that's the type of thing that if, you know, we talk later, this, we can have that conversation and I can actually throw, you know, throw out some other ideas, um, you know, that, of how that might, uh, how, how that might look and how that might work, you know? You know, what are you trying to get to? What's the problem we're trying to solve and then we can look for solutions to, to get there.
Yeah, cause potentially a, an estimate on the cost of, you know, making sure we have enough poll workers that are just focused on registering students on the day of or maybe some additional outreach ahead of an election during...
Although if you get them registered ahead of time, then...
Yeah.
That line isn't called back, you know, the polling place and...
Yeah.
An impediment for, um, people who are just there to vote. If a poll, gosh, if a line comes out of the building, I'm not even bothered.
Yeah, cause that, I mean, it is a stark situation when you go there and you see these kinda lines. It does take an, over an hour to register on election day for these major elections, so.
So if we can get it done ahead of time.
Or, or, and, and also that I think having the staff there just cause, yeah, I, um, I mean, I, I've worked the polls before at, um, you know, Pentecostal Assembly and, um, and that's where Water Street area votes and I spent my entire time registering voters constantly for, for, you know, I don't know how many hours, 15 hours or whatever it is. And that's, uh, and there were only two or three of us doing it, but there were just constant people coming in, so trying to, to relieve some of the pressure there, however we may do it, it would be good.
Are, I think, um, kind of, or it might just goes now within the budget now and maybe, and maybe it's more outward to telling students that you can vote early, exactly, like trying to see if that works first. That's a big change we're making. And getting that open to out there, she put valuable, I mean, that's a great organization that can help push that information out there. I can reference valuable to the neighborhoods and it's one on our side where they can, they go to neighborhoods and raise your people to vote and they, um, kind of more of that early, uh, registration thing. So they're very interested in voting for associations, um, cause you can register voting, I mean, I could register, chair to vote, you know? You know, you just vote through a cell phone and you can do it online. I mean, I caught one two weeks before, so, um, but I think trying those and, uh, and the, and the same, we're, we're going to all the same things.
Yeah, adding on to what you're saying, I wonder if like volunteers could go on the bus, you know, the, the city buses that students take and just, you know, stock the buses that register, because people aren't doing anything on the bus anymore, so.
Well, Route nine does go right by City Hall, so.
And at the same time, you might be able to, uh, transportation, well, again, to have diversity included, that's, uh, transportation, so every poll, uh, when you poll, you have control to, so you can do that.
Other thoughts, I guess?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so that's the, that was the main thing I've been thinking about, so we can chat a bit about some of the other options too and...
Who would have worked on that? Anticipating that, we have been looking at some numbers and ideas.
Okay.
I have a thought.
Yeah?
Um, just a few transparents, um, in my thinking process. I am, I do have actual concern about, um, from the meeting and the inspection, the conversations about and, um, I, I don't know, you know, I don't have anything, cause it sounds like, you know, it's already in the budget, but unless there would be something to help that along, um, just thinking out loud completely, but I don't know.
Yeah, it, it'd be, you know, the, right now, you know, we've, we've started exploring the software program, there's some implementation, I think, that, uh, who, my recommendation on that, we do want to see how that sells and, and, you know, to the efficiencies and improvements, you know, frontline for you and that's, yeah.
And yeah, we're, we're getting that, that will implement and that just is, like, that just is time at this point. But I think Scott, what were you saying? We should be up alive with that.
And Marching, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's really anything that could be done to move that along faster. It's just, you know, anytime you're implementing software, there's a lot of work that has to be done, I'm assuming, since it doesn't come, come cookie cutter right out of the box.
I agree because, you know, many times, you know, say this, when you're implementing your software, you take the system you're out and you automate it, which means you create a very inefficient system, you're basically automating an inefficient system. And if you do it right, you actually break down the system, you break down the process and you reevaluate how you were doing it at the beginning so that you have a better system if you want to, and so you can get double the, you know, that.
Yeah, you, you, you look at your workflow and you implement process improvements so that you, you know, just don't take any, like, they'll say take an inefficient process and, and make it now an electron, inefficient electronic process, you really take a look at your workflow.
The new planner to them in April, is that written there?
That would help with this.
No, that won't help directly.
The planners in July, right, and IT persons in, in, in April. But again, I, neither of those, this will be implemented.
Yeah, I do wish there was an amendment now, I know it's a good fact, but, um, Marshall doesn't get here.
Other, other thoughts?
I mean, I, I have an amendment potentially for next year.
Let's get to this year first.
But it all, it, but it, and it goes back to that, um, you know, affordability of our bus fares and I, I, obviously I saw the, um, fee and license schedule doesn't include any reductions, um, and I know we're, you know, planning to study that as part of this transit development plan, so it should be done by next year.
We have a lot of expectations for, I mean, the world is changing so quickly, it should be changing, but they, in terms of how to think about transportation and making it available and effective for, um, you know, for everybody, now just with technology and many of our changes. So, you know, this particular transit development, and I have very high expectations that it's not a status quo, you know, document, but it will be, uh, very informative and enlightening of how to look out to the, the world is changing and all this. Do you have any thoughts? Do we want to meet? Do you feel that you're...
When will we know for some minutes?
Um, we...
Probably, or like when we, I guess, not until...
Not, so we have a agenda back, we have a agenda back.
So when, like, if Jeremy does do something, you know, we'll...
Until we probably see anything back.
Yeah, I don't know how imminent this is. So I, I mean, I wouldn't feel the, ready to talk about it more probably by a week from now, but.
The focus of, on other, more session is totally regardless of, at this, you know, it would be a continuation of this conversation.
They must, but Catherine, I have a lot to share if she wants to get deeper into this.
I think this, I mean...
I, I know what you mean, but...
Yeah, I mean...
If they just, council is not, not about this.
Well, I think, I think it's important that, you know, direction, particularly on something as important as EDI, should, should be informed by, you know, a strong consensus. Or should get amended.
I think it's unfortunate that Andrew and Catherine, I mean, so I, I've already got it blocked out, but...
It can always be amended, anything, right, for...
There's something, he emailed me and said it's not amended, I'm surprised, but I, I don't personally have more creation to share.
Yeah, I'd be fine without meeting. You know, I think, I think they were well aware of the structure that we had to have that, you know, that tonight was to talk about amendments, so if they had amendments.
Maybe what it's actually...
Yeah.
None of them have brought forward ideas from that, I mean, Catherine hasn't talked on strategic plan and you...
I mean, would it be, would it be appropriate, like as you had suggested, to, um, have a meeting next week to talk about strategic plan or would it make more sense to put down polls or, you know, like if there aren't, if there aren't budget amendments, we could either have no meeting or need to talk about strategic plan? I'm just not sure what would be the best use of our time together.
I would be happy to talk about it, but I feel like that's not very popular. No one's, so I feel like that's not bad.
Right, things you don't wanna make anybody go...
I'd be, I'd be fine, I mean, if Catherine wants to talk about it, I'd be happy to have a meeting. I, I do wanna, I do, I do think that there is a renewable energy action plan meeting at six next Tuesday and therefore Kate and Andrew would presumably be at, at that or they would have to skip that to go to, unless, unless the work session just lasted an hour or something, which very well could. Yeah, so.
I don't have a real strong feeling, but it, it does strike me that there is maybe some feeling of wanting to talk more about the strategic plan before we vote on it or we could also, when will we, when will we vote on the strategic plan?
Um, I haven't really decided, I would agree.
Okay.
I mean, it, you know, at some point I'll put on your agenda, and then you have the legislative process to deal with.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, really this is to, you know, you know, not to make our manager, I mean, that, that...
Right.
That I get a sense that, yeah, it's enough there, you know, put it out, it's not, it has to be perfectly done.
Right.
You can amend it, talk about it on the floor.
My sense is that in general, there is happiness about the strategic plan. Um, I don't know, I think it would be kinda cool to have no meeting next week. I think I would, we could have no meeting next week if we're not imminently voting on the strategic plan and then people can have time to think if they would like to have a meeting specifically about that and that could maybe give people a break during budget season. Yeah, I don't... Yeah.
I would like to get it off the diamond and get it approved, so like, I mean...
Yeah, so you're talking on here, yeah.
Again, cause this is just one step, right? And then it's, you know, you need to formalize that one step before we can start doing the actual... So no meeting next week? No meeting? All right.
Decisive, I like it.
John was decisive. All right, then. Thank you very much for your time, staff. Thank you very much for your time and, uh, have a good evening.